Alright.
No.
Recording is up, uh, my apologies for the late start, uh, had a computer issue. Let's call a meeting order with a pledge, uh, and moment of silence starting six oh five. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Silence please. Thank you. Roll call please.
Trusty Pen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Hear it without a pencil, a pen?
Oh.
Irresponsible.
Snare.
Oh, thank you.
Trusty, trusty Bushner.
And they say the media is the enemy, enemy of the people and they're giving us pens. Outstanding, thank you.
And trusty Louis.
You didn't hear my last?
And trusty O'Malley.
Here. Damn.
Try.
Our upset.
Also President Attorney Jonathan Tingley, uh, from Andy's firm who we've all met before. Thank you for being here.
Card if you need it for the minutes.
Thank you.
And Chief, how are you?
Chief.
Yeah.
It sounded like I told the mayor.
Alright, alright, uh, first announcement, um, the April ninth regular meeting. Be the regular meeting and the organizational meeting as well as, and this assumes that the motion passes later in this meeting agenda, the public hearing for the nineteen twenty budgets. Uh, that's it for announcements, people to be heard, anyone like to speak? Alright, moving on. Um, old business, now, I had this on the agenda for discussing, uh, the request for vendor license for Brian Collins, operator of, uh, Mr. Dingling. Um, as Andy started to do a deep dive of it and got some documents from Judy, um, we discovered some interesting things. So John is prepped and ready to introduce us and talk to us about the situation.
So the, uh, the application for the peddler's license that has been used, we understand the pass refers to a local law adopted in nineteen seventy eight, which we don't have a copy of, but presumably vests this board with the authority to approve those applications. That was repealed in two thousand three, that law was repealed in two thousand three, uh, in lieu of adoption of a new local law, which actually vests the village clerk with the authority, uh, to review peddler's license, um, in the village. And to approve those, and upon a denial of such a license, there's an appeal available under that law and that appeal goes to the mayor. So actually, as we read the local law, uh, this board doesn't have the authority or jurisdiction to review or approve those peddler's licenses it currently sits.
Can you go into the details about what this law requires?
This law.
And they, they found this today and talked to me like two hours ago.
Yep, so, um, again, we don't know what this nineteen seventy eight law says, so we don't have a copy of that. But this law does require, um, much more information than the prior, uh, application form that you've been using did. So, for instance, this law requires submission of information about any criminal offenses of federal, state, uh, local laws, um, including information, uh, on offenses related to drug trafficking or sex offenses or things of that nature. And there's a series of standards that are, um, in the law for the clerk to, um, to use in deciding an application. Um, and those standards kind of guide her, her decision-making process. And one of those standards obviously is, is the, um, you know, the criminal background history of the applicant. Those, the, uh, the permit, if it's granted, is not transferable, there's a photo requirement so that you know who it is. There's actually a badge requirement, the village clerk issues a badge, um, and there's, you know, other requirements in here that, um, kind of speak for themselves, um, to some extent. But, um, the bottom line is for this board, on this application, um, that was submitted, it's actually not this board's job to decide it.
And, and the application that was submitted is not sufficient to decide it as a new law?
That's right, it's a very summary application and doesn't include all the information that this law requires. But what is required is set forth in this, in this local law, um, and kind of in short order, there should be a new application form developed that elicits the information that would be required to decide it, so.
I, I, I don't know how to ask this, but, so where did they get the application that he filled out? Okay, that's.
There was a book that's been there forever.
Okay.
In the vault, and it has the, um, application.
The old peddler's license application.
And then it has, um, a tear out section with information and then the license itself is probably, but it's a book that's been here.
So Judy, and I know you've been here, do you recall anybody, uh, ever having their photo taken or anything like that as far as the badge on this law calls out?
Nothing.
I'm just curious, it's.
It was just that paper all the time and it was just the same.
Cause I remember we had this conversation last year, we never even, we nev- we never.
Yup, yup, but it's, it's very clearly law, um.
Yeah, this was filed, yeah, uh, this was filed in the Department of State in, uh, two thousand.
Oh yeah, I see John Patterson, yeah, yeah, absolutely, I see that, that's, I'm just questioning how.
How we missed this for so long?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, it's not like Mr. Dingling is just coming here for the first time.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm guessing that since he's been doing it forever, they probably just kept using the same form.
Oh, sure.
And we just missed it back in two thousand three.
So it's probably, well, I don't even know if he's been coming here that long.
Well, I think we've got, you know, there's a little kind of like a receipt on the side.
I'm curious to see if, if he was actually, if Mr. Dingling's truck was in this area back four, what, sixteen years ago.
Possible, I mean, he's been here as long as I've been here.
I'm assuming there's no grandfather clause for folks that have already been, been doing it.
No, because, because in the annual, because in the annual peddler's license, no.
Yep.
Just asking a question.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I don't know.
Yup, yup. So, in a sense, digging into the situation has helped us figure out that we have some policies we're not currently enforcing. Uh, I'm assuming it's your recommendation that we simply table this and go over this and get the new forms, uh, to Mr. Dingling.
To him, yeah.
Yeah, I, our recommendation is that a form be developed, an application be developed based on this law. And that be used and then follow the process that's set forth here, which is the clerk decides it, um, based on the standards that are, are in there and.
And it seems kind of like a checklist of things, so if everything's in order, the clerk says it's fine and if things aren't?
There's, well, no, it's, it's not, um, you'll see on page four, um, under section eight, denial of permit, there is some standards that she would apply. Um, the location and time of peddling, um, can't endanger the safety and welfare of the peddlers or their customers. Um, if, if the investigation reveals that the applicant falsified information on the application, if the applicant is convicted of a felony or misdemeanor or local law violation involving a sex offense, trafficking, in controlled substances, or violent act against persons or property, et cetera. So there's six standards there, and those are what the clerk would look at to decide whether or not to grant or deny the permit.
Would, because it says applicant, but if you have multiple drivers, does that mean each one has to have this?
Well, that's the other thing, because the applicant is Brian Collins, who's the owner of Mr. Dingling, not the actual driver in this area.
Apply each one? Right.
So, yeah, I, the, the person that, and, and I don't know in detail what this says, but practically speaking, the person you want the photo of, that you want to know the background of, is the person that's gonna be act, interacting with.
Is the woman, her name is Sarah, who's gonna be driving in this area.
Driver. Right.
So she would actually be the applicant, but he could, I mean, he would be the.
Asking his agent.
Eh, right, I mean, cause he owns the company so called Mr. Dingling.
This is a local law from two thousand three talks about, uh, for peddlers, so, sort of changes our approach.
Right, so.
Are you familiar with Mr. Dingling, Ken?
I, I know that, I know the, the company.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're all over, yeah, yeah, Mr. Dingling is all over the place, it's not just one guy.
Right. No, no.
So he bought the franchise for our area.
Gotcha, so it says under permanent application, every person described pursuant to sections two and three, um, and, uh, section two says that it's unlawful for any person to engage in peddling within the municipality. And peddling is basically selling within the village, so, um, so any person selling, um, you know, has to have the, has to file the application. And, you know, the applicant, the photographs are of the applicant, presumably that's the person that is gonna be doing the peddling, you know.
Right. Totally makes sense, doesn't make any sense for Brian Collins to apply for the application if he's not gonna be the one that's up here that has to apply to section four.
Right, and, you know, we can take a, I, I can take a look closer, look at that and make sure that that's what the law requires, because.
There might be a way to just fill that, and when we do the application, figure it out so you have owner and applicant list on the application.
Yeah, right. The unfortunate, and the other, the other, I know, I mean, this issue, because we tabled it last time, the app, I mean, the application said from April first.
April fifteenth, no, April fifteenth.
What, fifteenth, oh, good, okay, so we do have time.
There's a provision in it that we could, that the permit can specify a shortened period.
Okay.
Well, no, I was, I was worried, didn't we weren't gonna have it done in time by the, when he applied, he applied, I thought it was April first, it's April fifteenth, to October first.
April fifteenth.
So the, so the applicant, um, the application can be reviewed under this by the village's clerks. As soon as that application form that elicits that information is ready, they can file it and it can be acted upon. You know, it's not, best case scenario would be if this was discovered sooner, but.
Right.
But, Bobby, in the meantime, do you wanna send this to him and let him know what the holdup is and so he can start working on gathering this information?
I think we definitely need to reach out to him.
Oh, I definitely reach out to him tomorrow, no problem, but the question, how soon are we gonna get the form?
We need to make a form up and run it through you guys, get corrections on it, and once that's good.
Yeah, the form should be fairly simple, it doesn't ask for too much information, but it certainly asked for more than what was on the original.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, are we, is this?
Uh, I'm sorry, this is John, uh, John Tingley, he works with Andy.
Oh, okay, good, alright. The one, the one thing I was, I know that Marie had runs when there's licenses being issued.
John, this is a Police Chief Ash.
Nice to meet you. Um, for games and chance, and I know this is something different, we do, we do background checks within our department. Just to make sure that they're, they're able to be such. One thing I think we should ask about is what kind of background check are they doing on their employees? And I'm not saying this is happening, but it could happen, where you get a level three sex offender and it's applied for a job, that's all, all of a sudden now driving through our village that technically shouldn't be in the village. So I don't know what kind of application process they go through, but it's something that's becoming a little bit of a concern.
Yeah, and I think that issue, if, if the law supports requiring anybody that's gonna be doing the peddling regardless of the company, but the actual person that's gonna be operating the vehicle, selling whatever it is they're selling, if that's the person that has to submit the background information, the application and the photograph, you know, that, I think that addresses that issue.
It sounds like we, that you should also be right into this to make sure we're asking for the right stuff.
Because what I'm saying is, God forbid, something happens with the driver, whether it's an accident.
Well, they, the operators had two incidents in the last two years, one being.
The operator of the company act, right?
No, the op, two of their drivers, one of their drivers was stalking girls with his ice cream truck, he was arrested for that, there were issues with sexual offenses there, and the year prior, one of their drivers was driving drunk.
I remember reading about Mr. Dingling, he was going across the room.
Those are the two, and one was Glens Falls, I think one was Scotia, or Miss Duna, but it's the same operator, so clearly, I'm not sure a lot of people are applying for this job, but that's a good point that I wanna make sure we're.
Is, is us running a background check, are you running a background check, is that at an expense?
No, just time.
So, but what do you do for background, do you just run, run a, a record, a criminal report?
We, we, we check within, we're, it's like housing, we've got a contract with housing that allows us to run a limited background check on them. So if it comes back with a prior, uh, we put, there's a, there's a section in there I have to put in housing. So it'll just come back and say that they, they have priors, that's all I could see, I get to see, and then I tell housing that they're positive. That's up to them to go back to them and say, hey, there's a problem here, you got arrested before. I can't tell them what they were arrested for, all I can do is tell them that they were arrested.
Right.
So that's what we do with the, the gambling, um, we just run it, it's, I don't know, sometimes you submit fifteen names, it's just a matter of. Punch them through and wait for the process, it might take an hour and a half.
Okay, I mean, this.
I mean, you can add that to your application fee, I guess.
I think the, um, under this law, the clerk certainly has the authority to do the, um, additional check with the police department.
Great.
Um, and then.
That could improve us if they change the drivers, you know.
Yup.
And then, um.
That's a good point.
Uh, in terms of whether the company, what their process is, I'd have to give that a little more thought on, on to what extent, um, you know, we can require that information to get the license when the person that's gonna be selling it is providing their information directly. It, it's prob, it's possible, but, um, you know, I, I just, I'm not familiar with this law, you know, in depth yet. We just, I just got it today when, when the mayor heard about it too, so. But certainly the, the clerk has the authority to review it, um, to, to ensure the safety of the, of the residents and the children and all that stuff in the village. That includes the ability to, to kind of double check the information that's being provided, and then if there is any, um, violation, any, uh, conviction of a felony or misdemeanor or, or local law violation, then the, you know, the license can be denied to that person, so.
Are you addressing the music in this?
I, I, I called them and spoke to them on, after our last board meeting, I called them a very nice time. And the, the individual was Brian Collins, his name is not, he's the owner or proprietor, but he's not gonna be the driver. But yes, I did speak to him about the, the volume on the, on the music, and when he's stopping to make sure that the music is definitely reduced, so, and to make sure that when they stop is not, you know, worse conducive to kids crossing or whatever, to, cause I said we're very concerned about safety issues, the kids and.
When the music's playing when they're stopped.
Right.
Can I just point out?
You can't get around like a car coming or something.
Section fifteen E, just to point out, and again, I'm not, you know, whether it's the Stevens over here or other people, it says it can be revoked for activities creating a public nuisance, noise could be considered so, so just to point out that section in here.
We, we looked at, um, other municipal laws too, and some of them get real specific where, um, if, if the, if the vehicle is stopped, there's no music, no sound playing, no horn noises, nothing like that. It's only while they're driving that they can have it playing, that, that's in other municipalities. If you want something, something like that specific, you would, you know, amend this obviously.
Have to modify the law.
Um, but then there's, you know, there's other, you know, any number of restrictions, you get hours of operation restriction, I think there is an hours of operation in here, um, uh, things like that, there's any, any number of different ways to regulate it.
Until eight PM and not for.
Between the hours of eight PM and nine AM.
How did we find that this was outdated?
Well, it says, uh, on, uh, the last, should be here the end.
Section twenty.
Yeah, section twenty, that, that law, the nineteen seventy eight law that the application refers to is repealed.
It, it was, I think Andy caught it because he knew of one from two thousand three, but the application's mentioned the nineteen seventy eight one.
Yeah, we have, we have the, the village laws certainly.
Yeah, I'm trying to think because I thought back before most of you guys were on the board, this issue came up, and that's why that law was addressed again.
Yeah.
Um, and I thought they, you know, I mean, yeah, well, they had something specifically dealt with.
We, we have, um, all of the local laws, certainly after this one, and none of them address peddling, so, this is the latest.
This probably was the one then.
This is the latest law, the two thousand three law is the latest law that there is on peddling, and we have laws before that too, but they don't go all the way back to nineteen seven, nineteen seventy eight is, is part of the law.
Alright, so.
And I would suggest that we put something on Facebook, because we get people to come in here at, at different times, and they'll say, well, I didn't know we had five for, you know, for me, because they'll say.
There's a sign when you drive in the village, right?
Yes.
Is that still there where it says check, speed check my radar and then says peddler's license?
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna pay attention to that, or they, or they'll use the excuse that I didn't know.
Yeah.
So I don't know how much more we can put out there.
Alright, uh, that makes sense, so game plan is, you're gonna reach out to him tomorrow and explain to him this local law, we'll get him, uh, an application as soon as we make the, the application and run it through Chief and run it through you guys, um, and then we'll pass it off to you, um.
What type of a timeframe, I mean, I'm sure he's gonna ask how long you think this will.
I would say.
We, we can review the application once it's ready in a matter of, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, just to make sure it asks.
Yeah.
No, no, I, I understand, you can review it.
Late this week, early next week, we should have him an approved application, that sounds, does that sound alright? Okay. Alright, in that case, um, I'm bearing all this, I'm looking for, well, I guess, we don't need to act on this, because we don't, it no longer requires board approval.
And we're not allowed anyway, right.
Yeah, in a sense, we're done, so, and, 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 oofu.
Your pum, Marie.
The board, the board obviously has, has, uh, addressed the application that's been filed, it's not a proper application, and we'll get one to the applicant and the clerk will make the decision.
Alright, thank you, I'm glad we, uh, looked into this, so that's good stuff. Alright, uh, new business, Greenway, we have, uh, two resolutions regarding the one degree way grants. I have a resolution approving the designation of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls as lead agency for the Huzick River Greenway Trail Enhancement Project. I'm just gonna skip to the now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls in special session duly convened as follows. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls hereby designates itself as lead agency pursuant to SECR, uh, with respect to the Huzick River Greenway Trail Enhancement Projects. So I'm looking for, um, the resolution to be offered.
Motion.
Second.
Brian, and seconded by Ben. This does require a roll call vote, and we weren't not certain if Vanessa was gonna be moved or not at this point, so she's not on there, but she's not here, so. As far as we know, she's, she would obviously still be trustee, so we'll just mark her as absent, uh, for the vote.
Okay. Trusty Pine.
Aye.
Uh, trusty O'Malley, uh, trusty Patton.
Aye.
Uh, trusty Bushner.
Aye.
And the, uh, Mayor Allen.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Aye.
And the offer was by Bush, trusty Bushner, seconded by.
And Ben. Trusty Patton.
Trusty Ben.
Trusty Patton.
Trusty old Ben.
Sounds like an off-brand instant roast.
Great. Alright, so it passes densely, uh, was it five or six or five, what do we got here?
Four, five.
Forty-five, really?
Okay, five with two, two absent, alright.
Two absent.
Uh, and the second one, similar, um, is a resolution for the adoption of negative declaration pursuant to, uh, SECR, State Environmental Quality Review Act for the Huzick River Greenway Trail Enhancement Project. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls in special session duly convened as follows. Pursuant to SECR and its implementing regulations at six, uh, NYCRR, part six seventeen, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls does hereby adopt a negative declaration on the Huzick River Greenway Trail Enhancement Projects in the form attached here too. Um, looking for someone to offer it.
Motion.
Trusty Bushner and seconded by Craig, trusty Pine, uh, also a roll call votes.
Okay, trusty Pine.
Aye.
O'Malley, uh, sent, Pat, trusty Patton.
Yes.
Trusty Bushner.
Yes.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much, passes as well.
I have, I have one thing I want.
But we got, we got more, so that's alright.
Oh, I thought I was gonna cancel, I'm sorry.
But don't, don't let me end the meeting, alright.
Mister, uh, Mister Mayor, before, before I leave tonight, I need you to get, sign the neg, negative declaration so I can take that back.
Yes, sir. Will do, um, I made the summary of where we were with the Hobby Garage Grant, so I wanna get that to you guys, can you pass those two down? This is for you, John? Can you also give one to, uh, to Judy and Neil over there? If you want one too? So just pass it over?
Here, I'll get it, I'm there. I got it.
I got it. So Neil, the garage comes with two trucks, right? Four, sorry, four.
Alright, so I just wanted to get a quick synopsis of the history of this and where we're at now with the, what it came in as, and I have all the extra documentation here if you wanna see anything, uh, we can, you know the background of this. Um, the original cost started with, um, the hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars for the engineering fees, that's broken down to, uh, pro, programming schematic phases, uh, design development, construction documentation, bidding, and then the construction administration. Now, it's important to note that the construction administration, which we signed in the first agreement, will still apply and will not need to be needed or changed in any way. Um, back, we advertised it back in July twenty eighteen, it goes out in four bids, uh, GC for general, uh, construction, uh, plumbing, electric and HVAC, the bids came back way higher than expected and well outside the scope of the grants. The lowest GC bids, and you can see them right there, um, the total projects ca, total bid cost was one point seven million, and that didn't include the hundred twenty-nine thousand already spent slash committed to MRB at the time. So we decided to put it back out for rebid, um, Neil, uh, has been so involved in the plans on this, uh, and trying to figure out uh, how to make this work, so thank you, thank you, thank you, Neil, for all your ideas. Uh, he's gonna retire soon and become an engineer, so he can double his income. Um, so we, we signed an additional engineering fees, um, um, proposal, which was twenty-four thousand, it was, um, twenty-five hundred for pre-designed phase, nine thousand for schematics, design developments, um, phase, twelve, uh, thousand five hundred for the construction documentation phase, and they waived the charge for the rebid, um, so that added up to the twenty-four thousand, so the total MRB costs, which I mentioned on the next page, are the original hundred twenty-nine thousand plus the twenty-four thousand, which is why we have MRB services at hundred fifty-three thousand. Uh, so, we had, uh, very few bids come back, we only had three bid for the general, um, construction, two for electric, which were actually identical bids, like, like the exact numbers came back for both. Uh, one for plumbing and one for HVAC, um, on the top of the second page is the summary of where they came back in. Uh, the GC was at seven hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred ten, now, I prefaced that with, there were nine, um, alternates. Four of them were, if we had the funds, we'd add them in, um, which would add to the costs, and the other, um, five were deducts, that if we, uh, wanted to, we could actually remove them and do the work ourselves. Neil and I went through all of those, um, here's the one I'm looking for, uh, to talk through what, what that would have meant for it, and we, that, the original general contracting bid was actually higher, once we took out the deducts, we kept one add, no, we kept two adds. Um, so we added twenty, let me see, which one am I looking at here? Who was the low one? We added twenty-three thousand for the adds, which were things we thought were structurally would make a lot of sense, um, but we took out four out of, no, we took out all five, but we may put back the snow guards for one side, um, as work that we can do ourselves later, or like, for example, we can get lockers and benches used later, we can do the painting ourselves. Um, the, the, the break room, putting in all the cabinetry and stuff, we can do that ourselves later and save money for that later, so. Um, at the end of the day, that's where the seven sixteen for, uh, GC came from. Uh, the electric costs were identical, hundred seventy-eight thousand, um, plumbing and HVAC, we only received one back, uh, seventy-eight thousand seven and eighty-six thousand approximately eight, so the total cost of the bid was one point oh six oh, one million. Um, adding in the two MRB services, that brought the overall cost to one point two one three million, and again, this is a one point one million grant. Uh, so we're looking at the project costing over the grant, uh, hundred thirteen thousand two hundred five, plus their additional soft costs. Um, there'll be special inspection costs, which will be up to about five thousand dollars, the cost of stones, which Neil has, I think, already figured out, budgeted, and a possible contingency, um, as needed for things. Now, Neil and I have talked through a lot of possibilities on this, um, we even talked about the possibility of putting the electric out for rebid because we felt like, everyone felt like that number was way too high for what was there. Um, but we thought about the cost of putting it out for bid versus the savings wasn't really gonna pay off that much. Um, so Neil has talked about how to budget, um, these funds, either use some of the unused funds if we have any from this year and hold on to them, uh, and I forget the exact process that Andy mentions, there's a way to do that where if we have unspent funds from this, we tag it and spend it next year, I forget what that's called. Um, as well as changing some of his budget for next year to take care of the shortfall, so that we can still get this done, um, and it wouldn't, um, you know, wouldn't fall back on taxpayers in, in a sense. Neil, I talk a lot, you wanna add anything, man of many words?
You cover it.
Alright, so Neil and I are, yeah.
I checked with the security, uh, for the cameras, and that has to be, when you start the project, he just, he just wants to know so we can move the wire, there's wire that's there, that's already for the doors and pumps and everything, for this, with the fobs.
Yeah.
And by the way, the.
That won't, that won't change, will it? But we may, do we have any plan to do keyless entry there? I don't think we have anything.
Because we already have the keyless entry.
You can just move it.
We're just moving it from one building to the other.
Okay.
He just, he just wants.
That's actually, I think, some of the costs, I think, within the police, in that.
It's not a problem, I, I guess I just wanna point out when we get going, just Scott, give the heads up so he can kind of put the plans together.
Alright. We'll make sure to mention that to, uh, our MRB guy, cause that would, it'd be, it'd be best when to, for MRB to know when, when GC's working, there may be ideal times for him to run the wires and such.
And just as a.
Thank you.
One thing's working with Andy, negotiating our agreement with Spectrum Charter Cable, is one of the provisions in there talks about is every village street serviced by cable access and the garage is not. Remember, what did they want, like ten, twenty thousand run the line down there, something like that?
Twenty, the original price was twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, so that.
And if we dug the ditch from Curry Avenue to the new shop area, they're not two thousand off.
So we're trying to actually put that in the agreement of somewhere in there that they will take care of the rest. So we're trying to actually put that in the agreement of somewhere in there that they will take care of the rest of that.
That would be great.
But that's something I've gotta follow with Andy on, so. But it could also time with wait the other.
So it is Neil's and my recommendation that we um. Move forward with this, uh which I think we would be basically needing a motion to award bids to whichever contractors reach.
Y- yeah, so I I just have a couple of issues that I wanna identify. One is for the plumbing and for the HVAC. And one scenario is identified on the summary we got, um that a non-inclusive bidding certificate was not signed. And one says it was not notarized. If those bids did not have a non-inclusive bidding certificate, you should get those before you award a bid from those contractors. And you can do that after the bids are submitted, I looked at that today, I looked at case law. Um you can reach out to the bidder and say, hey, you didn't submit a non-inclusive bidding certificate and you can get that if you don't have it.
Remember which contractors that was for?
Um the one uh for plumbing is Hayden.
It's just the one plumbing, okay.
HVAC, um it also says Hayden.
Yeah, that's plumbing and HVAC, okay.
One summary says not notarized and one says no, just no on the on that column, so I don't. I don't have the original bid documents. That would be something that would need to be done before the bid is awarded, you need to make sure you have a non-inclusive bidding certificate. Um for all of those. On the electrical, since the bids are the same, um deciding who to award the bid to. Um you you're not just giving it to the lowest bidder, you're giving it to the lowest responsible bidder. If both bidders qualify, if MRB believes that both bidders qualify and meet the specifications. Um then it's really up to the board discretion wise, which better is, which bidder is better qualified. And you can make that decision.
Yes, they are.
Harold Klune and J A Bradley.
Ones out of Boston Spa, one and ones out of Husick Falls.
Well, I mean, I always like to lean local and Neil says he prefers Bradley, so I'm okay with that.
I prefer Bradley.
Harold Klune doesn't have a bid bond? Or no, I'm sorry, Harold, they didn't acknowledge the addenda.
Yeah, that's that's another issue, if they didn't and and really the. If they didn't get the addenda, then their bid may not be responsive to the bid specs. But that's a question for MRB to to answer for them, I don't know if their bid spec, their their bid may satisfy the bid specs. Uh notwithstanding not having the.
Oh Bradley has it, so they're okay if we approve them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. What what do we have to get the HVAC and um electric or plumbing people to sign again?
The non-inclusive bidding certificate?
No collusion.
No collusion. Wink wink, nudge nudge. Get a throw up ball, anyway, um so at this point then, you're recommending we can uh. Approve the general uh construction and the electric and wait on the other two?
Well, and and w- what I would say is, eh what happens if you don't get a non-inclusive bidding certi- you will. But what if, what happens if you don't and you have to rebid that part of the job? You don't know what the total cost is gonna be, so there's a couple options, you can award all the bids. Subject to receiving a non-inclusive bidding certificate from the plumbing and HVAC.
Okay.
That way, if you never get it, none of the bid awards are valid affected.
Would it be an issue to wait the two weeks until the ninth and then just table it tonight? And and get the non-inclusive uh agreements and then bid, uh then approve it at the ninth?
It'd be more ideal to get it approved tonight because of the timeline of getting when things start and seasonal stuff.
And we can pass it, like you said, contingent on receiving the non-inclusive bid certificates from.
But it would make, it would make all of the bids, it would, we wouldn't award anything, it's contingent, the contingency is all or nothing.
That's my recommendation, is it all be, all of the bids that are being awarded be conditioned on receiving that non-inclusive bidding certificate from the one that's missing.
Plumbing and HVAC.
Because you don't know if you'll ever get it, and if you don't get it and you have to rebid, you don't know what the bids are gonna come in at, you don't know what the cost is gonna be if you over the job. The village board may decide not to move forward with the project, I mean, that's an extreme scenario, but if you award the bids. And then you're kind of in a, you know, between a rock and a hard place if you have difficulty finding plumbing and HVAC within budget.
Well, basically what that means is we can as a board move to do it subject to getting these documents and we simply won't. Um we'll tell MRB, but they can't officially confirm until the other documents are in hand with the other people who we've awarded.
It's a matter of probably, I mean, they can.
They can probably get it to you tomorrow.
Get it to you tomorrow, exactly.
Uh just a question.
Yeah.
That I hate to be the one to ask.
That's fine.
But I'm gonna, um I know this money is earmarked from Marcion's office, is that money we definitely know exists?
Yes.
Okay, cause I know there's been issues with other projects town.
One of the things that came up only when I was meeting with the town and meeting with um uh Senator uh Daphne Jordan and Assemblyman um. Um Jake Ashby was that with the the rink one, the rink grant, it hadn't progressed very far, so. They were not able to guarantee that it would still be there as things progressed because they're no longer in the majority. Well, one of them isn't in the majority anymore. Um with this one and with the Snow Street one, we had already progressed so far that it wasn't an issue because we'd already. Um put out the 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 proposal for bid, gotten the bids backed on all the plans, that's all fine.
Remember, right, it's already been approved.
Yes.
I'm just double checking that.
That's a very, very good move, thank you. Um so then I can list out all four of these on motion subject to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be making the motion, but.
Yeah, yeah, you can do it that way, it's fine.
So I'm looking then for a motion to approve the GC contract to Bishop Bowdre Construction.
Motion.
Uh hold on, let me get through all of them here.
Do all of them at once?
Uh yep. Um the electric to, I think you guys have decided J A Bradley and Sons.
Yep.
Yep.
And the plumbing and HVAC ones to Hayden, plumbing and Hayden, heating, sorry. Um, subject to the non collusion.
Say conditioned, all the awards of the bids are gonna be conditioned on receipt of a non-inclusive bidding certificate. From Hayden.
And the notarized.
Yeah, that's should be in the same. A properly executed and notarized non-inclusive bidding certificate.
Alright, what he said, so could someone give me a so moved on that?
So moved.
Alright, from a motion from Brian.
Second.
Second Craig, uh any further discussion this? Be interesting to see who they would have colluded with since they're the only ones who bitted, but whatever.
Well, they could have colluded with non-bidders by having them not bid.
That's true, that's true, or with the Russians, yes, alright. Um in that case, with no discussion, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we, do you know, did a roll call for this one?
Uh.
No, you don't have to do a roll call though.
Alright. Okay, um so um going on, on, we'll bring up yours uh in in a moment, um. I sent you guys the uh packet of information uh regarding the water bills. Um and we have it all here, uh regarding ninety nine Church Street, uh a lot of information was submitted. Including previous uh bills. Um Denise did a deep dive on the his- history, history of usage to find out what this proposed payment would be if we accepted it. Um she details um from October eleventh all the way through to December fourteenth. Uh when she finally, she went through a bunch of different plumbers. He's what ended up, ended up doing, that's funny. Um and basically the request was um would you accept the twelve hundred fifty dollar check? Um uh and waive the additional costs. Um the average cost of all of the previous, I think, seven bill cycles was seven hundred thirty three dollars. And that's just for water and sewer usage combined. So when you take out the water bond, sewer bond, refuse, it leaves uh a thousand dollars and eight, a thousand eighteen basically. Um that would go to water and sewer usage, uh and that's this, that's this number right here. Which means in a sense, if we did that, we'd be waiving and I forget what my email said. Yeah, so you guys have gotten a review it, what are your thoughts?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
A water bill of thirty three hundred dollars.
Well, it's actually forty three hundred.
Forty three hundred dollars, is that like the only one in the village?
Originally it was, yeah.
Besides like a manufacturing plant.
Yeah, I mean, and and I've spoken with with everyone in the office on this, historically, she's been uh very good at paying without any issue. Um I think they've noted that their usage at this location has actually been on a little bit of the high side anyway. Uh but they've been okay with it, um and I also think that the. I wanna say that they they're, they said they were not gonna contest the next bill because the fix didn't happen until after this. And we, I think we already looked at their usage and their next usage is gonna be high, cause it's already. Already got a a fair amount of usage, they're not gonna contest it either.
I just can't, I I, I think in an email I said, this is the same as I, I have a broken window, I'm not taken care of and I expect Doug's oil to give me credit on the fuel. You know, it's buyer beware, if the water main broke coming in and that's something they need us to come turn off, I get that, totally different scenario. But to me, it's it's whether they've been nice or paid the bills and time or everything, I I just don't see this as. You know, it's setting a good precedence of not maintaining things you're renting. Um you know, it's kinda not our problem at this point.
But it's, well, the the other issue I have with it as well, Brian, is the fact that it was chronologically, she did a great job as far as, you know. From time of finding the supposedly the leak when she was notified by her tenants. But it's not our fault, they took six weeks to fix it. The, so why should the village be held accountable for a difference of that much money? For the lack of response of a plumber?
It took me three months to get an electrician at one point because there's a shortage, they're busy, you know, that's my own, I had to deal with it, so.
Right, but this is.
You know, it's the same thing.
This is utility.
Yeah.
You know, if they didn't have power, they wouldn't wait six weeks to get it fixed.
Yeah, like that's something I could wait on, but it.
I mean, but, cause it wasn't costing them anything, the water was just filling the cellar. And then looking at a lot of the the email trail too, the the whole correspondence stating that. Well, the tenant noticed the water is really, it's it's coming out a lot, you know, it's it's leaking more. Well, when is it time to get a hold of the village and say, look, we've got a problem here? I mean, after the fact, after creating a forty five hundred dollar uh water bill, doesn't seem like the the time to. They should have been a little more proactive in my, in my eyes.
They also, they also had multiple issues, as you go through the log, there were multiple things that had to be fixed, there were leaks beyond the just one. So I I just, I agree, there wasn't a proactive element here and with regrets, I have to decline to be able to support any credit on this.
You know, eh 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 at the same time, that is a huge pill to swallow. Uh you know.
I I I.
That's the hard part.
Seems like there's gotta be some middle ground somewhere there.
I I agree, that's that's what, but and I'm not quite sure that twelve hundred and fifty is the middle ground if you.
Or or, you know, payments with no fees added on.
No, no, no penalty, right, no percentage penalty.
It seems like, you know, I don't wanna, you don't wanna dr- drain somebody's bank account all at once or something that. It just seems like, just, it seems like we could, we could talk to the person and come up with something more than just saying no.
I'd be okay with a payment plan if they had to pay it, but they, there's water that we processed and.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying to to make it all go away, but maybe there's a.
Well.
May may maybe, maybe the plan is to forgive the sewer site since we didn't incur any.
Right, cause the water didn't go down the drain.
Maybe there, maybe there, maybe there's some middle ground there that, you know.
There's twenty two hundred and eight dollars right there.
Yeah.
Maybe that, there's a logical reason to do something different that maybe may make it a more. Rather than just saying, oh, we forgive it, let's come up with a reason for what we're doing and that might be your logical reason.
Okay, so the twenty one forty four eighty three was the water usage.
Right.
Um which means um we would waive the sewer usage completely, that'd be two thousand two hundred and eight dollars ninety one cents waived. Um what that means is, her original pay was one thousand two hundred fifty is what she offered. You take out the refuse, water and sewer bonds, it brings it down to uh one thousand eighteen twenty nine leftovers she wanted to put together for this. So if we only charge her the water usage and we take out what she has paid already. That would leave her with uh uh needing to cover one thousand one hundred fifty eight, fifty eight remaining.
What she offered twelve fifty, right, Rob?
She offered twelve fifty.
What was the sewer amount?
Uh the sewer was twenty two oh eight ninety one.
Yeah.
Well, we probably can't forgive that whole thing, cause some of that was. What would the average sewer be for the subtract, I guess, what is the average sewer usage? Are there water coming in with the average usage?
Three seventy eight was what the last bill was.
So I would say if we take the twenty two oh eight and subtract three seventy eight, that'd be a good number that I'd be okay with.
Alright. Sewer, twenty two oh eight ninety one, what are we subtracting?
Three seventy eight.
Well, yeah. What's the average, what's the average that Denise had calculated for the uh.
Do we wanna just not figure this out in this meeting and take our time and have a night and just do it?
I think that's a bet- better.
Rather than trying to back at the end a little bit right now, why don't we actually write it down? Nothing I don't trust you, Rob.
No, that's fine. Um.
You're a music teacher, it's math.
Hey now.
It's math.
Just because I can count to four over and over and over again.
Music is math, right?
It is.
So you guys want to.
I do social studies, I do math.
Leave the water usage. And you want to take uh only charge whatever her average of sewer usage has been, is that correct?
I was just suggesting.
Forgive the sewer sewage usage on the huge bill backing out the average amount. So it's twenty two oh eight minus.
Minus three seventy eight.
Then I'm looking for a motion to waive only the sewer usage. Um with um past the average sewer usage, basically.
Yes.
The sewer, the fees for the sewer usage for this bill, after you subtract the average sewer.
No, I I think I. Just, just.
Go for it.
So. You're gonna charge the full water bill.
Yes.
And you're gonna charge what the average sewer bill was, three seventy eight.
Yes.
And the remaining sewer bill is what you're looking to forgive.
Correct, yes, okay. I liked the wording, it sounded much more simple. Lawyer, I like it.
Well, that, that's actually, that would make it more complicated.
Alright, so I'm looking for a motion to um.
To waive the amount?
We are going to um charge the full water bill usage, we are going to um only charge the average sewer. Usage and we will uh waive the remaining sewer fee. Cause it sounds like that's what you guys have decided.
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Well, yeah, if you know, if you know the number, if you know the number, it makes sense to do the number.
I don't know the number.
That's what I'm saying, we don't know the number, that's why.
That's why I just said, if we wait, figure all this out, put the number in next, in two weeks.
The reason I'd like to wait until the ninth is hopefully we'll have a full board because I really think something of this magnitude should be. Addressed by the entire board.
Then why don't you motion table it?
I motion the table.
Alright.
Doesn't anywhere senselessly.
Then we can do the math ahead of time and have it.
Right, you can, you can have Denise.
Um and and she may wanna show up and talk about it, that's fine.
Oh no, oh no, well.
Open meetings, Mary, open meetings.
She's entitled to.
Um okay, um any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, tables. Um I do, uh. I am uh looking for a um motion to hold a public hearing on the tenor of twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget. On April ninth, two thousand nineteen at six P M.
Second.
Uh Brian and Craig, a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's, Bobby, you had something you wanna bring up?
Yes, um I was contacted by previous mayor Borg. In regards to, he made a suggestion, asked if I would bring it up and, or just not actually if I brought it and would bring it up. And asked what I thought about it, and I think it was a great idea, of naming this boardroom in honor of Ann Bourne. After all her years of service in this village, she served on the board, she served as the 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 village trust, their village. Uh clerk for so many years and we can put a plaque above the boardroom outside or in the hallway, whatever. So we find this is Ann, Ann Bourne.
Why not take it a step further and make it the building? Memorial.
My only question is legally, can we name a room that's also used as a courtroom?
I don't have any idea right now, but I'll let you know.
But say at least the building could be, cause she served as a trustee, she's, that's a great idea, but we could probably do the whole building.
Some, we should, we should do something.
The Office of Court Administration may have something to say about naming the courtroom room. Um the building may be a little bit easier, um if the Office of Court Administration has an issue with naming just the room.
Alright, that's great, thank you for bringing that up.
But I think that that's a great idea, I mean.
We could do, name the village office as part of the, part of it, if it's not the courtroom.
Right.
That'd be great.
Right, actually, we could do that, we can actually put it, if we had to, we could put a plaque. Yeah.
It's a good idea.
But I just think it's, we should definitely honor Ann in some way, shape or form, I think it's great of ex-mayor Borg to bring that up, that was a great idea, you know. Maybe she tells me on Saint Patty's Day and.
I love it, love it, love it, um I did have one more thing I wanted to bring up. I love it, love it, love it, um I did have one more thing I wanted to bring up, um and I just talked to Marie about this. Uh what's the exact title of it?
It's um workplace violence contact person, it's, it's already written in the, in there already. As a workplace violence contact person.
Right.
It's, it, it always has been, I think, it always has been the village clerk.
Correct.
Right, but it was named before it was Ann, and, and. I wanna replace it in, in my rules and regulations with Marie's name, so that it's all fine.
So we see uh basically uh a motion to appoints.
The workplace violence.
Court admitting contact.
Contact person.
As Murray.
Yep.
Ray O'Neil.
Motion.
That's alright?
Second, yep.
Uh Ben and Brian, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, uh and with that, yeah.
Real quick, only because you might be adding things to the agenda, I know you're busy with other things, but that home system?
Yes, I, I'm hoping to get that on the April meeting.
Alright, good, cause I, she called me today and I told her that you are, you and I have talked about it.
Yes.
And that we're headed in that direction, and I would see, there's a savings there, and I think that she does a presentation.
I would, yeah, I don't even think it'll need a presentation, I just wanna talk to her and get what she has to say, bring it to the board, be like, let's do it.
Yeah, it sounds like a great idea.
Does, alright, uh in that case, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Ben and Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.